Oh, good for you.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie Zoning Board of Appeals. If you would please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Just for the record, we have, two of our regular members are not here this evening, and so we have two, the two alternates will be regular voting members. For those of you that are new to the town's ZBA, this meeting will be divided into two halves. During the first half, we hold public hearings on each of the applications that are before us, and we'll do it in the order in which they're listed on the agenda, which you can find in the little tray by our attorney's desk. During the public hearing, we'll ask each applicant to come forward and to be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. And then we'll ask the applicant to give a very brief description of what the, what the application is about. And then members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions. When we've finished the questions from the board, we'll then turn it over, turn the floor open to any member of the public that wishes to address that application, but we would ask that you address only that application. And once again, if people from the public want to speak, they'll have to be sworn in.
My God.
When we've finished the public hearings, we'll go back to the top of the agenda for the deliberation phase. And during this part of the meeting, the board will discuss each of the applications and then vote on them. During this part of the meeting, there's no further input from the public, though you're certainly welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. Okay. Tonight, we've got seven items on the agenda, and so we'll just start with the first one. This is an adjourned public hearing. Herbert Reddell, 611 Duchess Turnpike. May not be here yet, so I think we'll just, we'll skip this one and come back to it later. Item number two, Tinkelman Architecture on Van Wagner Road. Okay, if you'd just state your name for the record.
Jason Litchwick, Tinkelman Architecture.
Mr. Litchwick, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Understood. So, over for President.
Let's see, I think before you begin, we probably should clarify something, and that's that you've been here before, and so we may not need to go over, you know, everything.
Yeah.
And I think...
Yeah, we actually didn't advertise this as a public hearing because we didn't need, it doesn't need to be a new public hearing, so for the people that are here, if you want to give a 30-second or so description of what it is, as I understand it, nothing's changed from the prior application. It's exactly the same, except that you now have the negative declaration from the planning board.
Correct. The one thing that did change, Eric Coleman advised, from the planning board advised, that we did not need a variance for lot coverage because we don't have a building. He said for a parking lot, it doesn't apply. So basically, we just need a variance to allow the parking lot in the R-20 zone.
So then we'll deem that variance application withdrawn?
The first, the one I submitted for this applica, for this, for tonight...
For the lot coverage, that portion of it will deem to be withdrawn?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Okay, so that's number two on our agenda, or part two, I guess. Yeah, okay, so why don't you just kind of give us the one-minute tour here, and then we can go on.
I'll actually hold this up for you guys. So, in January, we were approved to extend, to fit out the rest of our building to nine tenant suites, and in order to do that, we needed the additional parking. We purchased a lot across the street, the Gannon property, which will allow us to put 22 parking spaces, which then allows us to meet the 50 spaces that's required by code. We're providing pedestrian crossways, sidewalks, everything that the planning board has requested. Last time, we had the public hearing, we had people show up that were concerned about screening. We met all of their requirements. We provided a fence for the people on the west side, and for the homeowner that is located on the east, we're providing shrubbery that will screen the headlights from her property. And they're both very happy with that. Other than that, it's, you know, we have the parking lot that's in an R-20 zone at the moment, and, you know, without the variance, we can't proceed.
Right. Okay, okay. Any, any quick comments, questions? Okay. Technically speaking...
Phyllis has a question.
Hmm? Oh, I'm sorry.
Could I ask you, please, to address the lighting?
Yes.
For that project, so that, how it's going to impact the residential part of that community?
Yes, for providing parking lot lighting, there will be three fixtures, and it all has the nighttime protection, so we don't have any kind of glare in the sky, and the fog candles do not exceed over our property line, so it will not affect... The, the people on the west are up higher, so the lights will not be affected by them, and the people on the east are far enough back that they will not be affected by the lights either. So there's nothing that's overspillings that will be a glare to any of the residences.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, the public hearing is already closed. The last time, essentially, we were led to believe that the secret process had already been concluded. It wasn't, so actually, the approval that we granted last time didn't happen. So now, now we can proceed, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number three, Daniel Katz from Fortuneoff, 1890 South Road. Is there anyone from representing Fortuneoff?
In the back.
The architect's running a little late.
Okay, all right, we'll come back to it. All right, item four, Robert Velez and Julia Di Matteo, 11 Peekaboo Lane. Is... Wow, we're not doing well tonight.
No.
Yeah, yeah, we're already at item five, yeah, okay. The item...
Jim?
I just have a question. I'm not Peekaboo, I'm in Lakeview, Peekaboo. Do they have time to comment when they come up, or did I miss that?
No, you'll have an opportunity to comment when, when that...
Thank you. I didn't know the procedure, because sometimes the comments are first.
No, no. We do one application at a time.
Thank you.
The estate of Gilda Salcicchia, 2 Gertrude Place. Good evening. And if each of you would just state your names for the record and then be sworn in.
I'm Elda Lentini.
Carrie Constantino.
Ms. Constantino, and could you say your name again?
Elda Lentini.
Lentini?
Lentini. Lentini. And Ms. Lentini, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you God? Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, so you're here for a variance for an enclosed porch. Okay, could you just kind of explain what the situation is?
Actually, she's in charge of the estate. Ms. Gilda had passed away last year.
Can I reply now?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
So she's not aware of, like, there wasn't enough room. I guess it's been existing for a long time, so...
Okay. So there's going to be, there's going to be no change to the existing house, okay?
Have a single phrase?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I see here that it was built in 1950. Is that, is that about right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And I don't, I don't see anything else to talk specifically about a porch. Okay. Um, okay. Questions?
No questions.
No questions. I have no questions.
No questions? Okay. Existing, okay. Paul?
No, no question.
Okay, Phyllis?
No, I have no questions.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 2 Gertrude Place? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousalized?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item number six, Great Eastern Color Lithograph Corporation, 46 Violent Avenue. They're not here either, all right?
Do we have the right day?
Fortunately. Item seven, Matthew Lund, 42 Valley View Road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good morning.
Okay.
Kevin Lund.
Matthew Lund.
Mr. Lund and Mr. Lund, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you want to just briefly describe the project that you're doing there?
Sure. Well, when my son purchased the home, we had done an extensive set of drawings for our renovation. We were given by the bank, he purchased it from a real old survey. So when we designed the third car garage, we assumed by what we had, that we had to require 20 feet. Once, we had, we hired a surveyor shortly after we got started. By the time it got done, it was somewhat of a lengthy process. We realized that we were short the five feet to maintain that 20-foot setback, and so I, that brings us here.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No, no questions.
Betty?
I have no question.
Art?
No questions.
Um, the, you've started work on that, on the garage?
Not, not the third, we stopped at the existing house.
Okay.
Once I figured out that, we realized that we were not going to make it what we had turned into the building department. We just kept working, but we stopped right at the existing garage.
Okay, so, so this would be a new construction?
There's a third car to the two car, and that's what I think I had outlined on the sketches I turned in.
Okay. When I was, when we were out there, actually, on, on Wednesday, your, your crew was working frantically to try to get rafters up, so I'm sure because you wanted a tarp up there before the...
Right, yeah.
Did you make it?
Yeah, just barely, yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. Paul?
No, no questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Carmen?
No question.
Okay. All right, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 42 Valley View Road? Okay, hearing none. If there are no further questions, motion to close the public hearing.
Approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, yeah, so let's, let's go back to item number one, Herbert Reddell, 11 Duchess Turnpike.
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Am I late, or were you early?
Yes.
Early.
How's that? Yes. We're, we're pretty much on, on time, but I think the weather is kind of...
Well, I thought it started at 6:30, so I'm late.
Oh, okay.
I'm late.
But you're here.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning zoning board, Frank Reddell, project manager for Herbert Reddell Property. I was here last month before you...
Okay, and I think just for the record, you're, you're already signed in. This is an adjourned public hearing, or you're sworn in, so that's okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
I was here last month. We were talking about the old OTB building. We're seeking three variances to allow the existing sign to remain. Variants are set forth in the agenda. First is the height. Second is the area of the sign. And lastly, as pointed out by the agenda, there's a code regulation that prohibits signs being closest to the front yard setback. The existing sign is right on the front yard setback. That, believe it or not, the building only sits back three feet from our property line. It's that close. If we were to comply with a 10-foot setback, it would be behind the side of the building. Nobody would ever see it. During the last meeting, the chair asked me to provide some information as far as the height of the existing sign, and also an estimate to take off just the top section. I believe I sent that, hopefully you all had that by now.
Did, did everyone see that?
Yes, I did.
Yes, yes.
The material that he sent us?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good, good.
I did.
As you can see, just to remove the top part of it, would be over $6,000. I spoke with Todd at Gloody Signs, and he advises that if we were to remove the sign, it would probably cost between $18,000 and $20,000 by the time you bring it down and remove all the, all the materials and the iron and stuff. Keeping this sign is very important to us. That whole area of Duchess Turnpike is pretty congested. A lot of, most of the buildings are very close to the road. I brought a couple of photographs, if I could bring those up to the board to take a look at. One of the unique things is when you're up on top of Brickyard Hill, you can see the sign perfectly. But as you come down, close to where STS Tire it, the sign out front that advertises Joe Q's Autobody, it completely obscures the sign. You can't even see it. It's not until you get past that that you see it, and you still can't see the sign, the wall sign that's on the building now. If you were from out of town, traveling down the road, it's two lanes at that side. If you're in the left-hand lane, and at the last minute, you see that's where you've got to go, you've got to try to change lanes, which is pretty dangerous, in my opinion. And if people, the fork is right there, and if you go off to the, to the left on Main Street, if you're not from the area, you're not going to know how to double back. I could bring, if I may, I can bring these photos up?
Sure. Actually, why don't you just, just start them at one end, and we'll just...
Okay.
This is just the top of our sign, you can see. Actually, I'm standing in the road when I take the picture. And then this one completely hides it. As I got closer, and then, closer, you can just see the outside of it.
Okay. Now, I guess, one thing puzzled me a little bit, and that's, you talked about the setback. Though both the building and the, and the sign are actually quite a ways back from the roadway.
They are, but not from the property line.
Okay.
The state owns, in front of our building, there's a grass area, then there's a public sidewalk.
Right.
Our property line doesn't start until on the other side of, of that sidewalk, believe it or not.
Oh, okay, so, so the state has a big, big roadway there?
There was a taking, there was a taking when they redid the roads in the 70s.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Because, because when I was out there, I, I...
It looks like we have a good-sized yard, but we don't.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah. Right. Okay, so, let's see. Carmen, we'll start with you. Any questions?
Not really, no, Jim.
Okay. Phyllis?
Well, I'm glad that you took those pictures, but it occurs to me, as I look at them...
Okay.
How is the granting of this variance going to improve visibility of your sign when it's still going to be behind Joe Q's Autobody?
Well, for this reason, when you're back closer towards Brickyard Hill, you can see the sign, so you know the building is coming.
And you are referencing Brickyard Hill as what?
I'm sorry. The entrance would be at Burnett Boulevard and 44, that hill going up.
Okay.
My dad used to tell me, they used to call that Brickyard Hill. Apparently, there used to be a brick factory there years ago.
Okay, thank you. So go ahead.
Oh, so when you're up at the top of the hill on 44, going down towards Brick, going down towards Burnett Boulevard, you can see the sign, you know where the building is. So as you come closer to the building, even though the sign is obscured momentarily, you know that you should be in the right-hand lane, and where you're going to be turning before the fork.
The $6,000 to take the top of the sign off, how much does that get in the way? I, I'm not, I, $6,000 is, yes, indeed, a considerable sum, but how much of that really, does that make it undoable?
Nothing is undoable. It's whether it's reasonable under the circumstances, in my opinion. That sign's been up there for 60 years. It's never really bothered anything. We just want to make use of the existing sign. We have a good tenant there now, and we hope that they stay there a long time, but they have really come to us and asked us to try to keep that sign so that they have better visibility for their out-of-town people. They have a lot of out-of-towners coming.
Yeah, it's a specialty, kind of.
Yes, it is. To answer your question, anything is possible, anything is doable, but we're hoping that the reasonableness of our request would outweigh that kind of expenditure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Yeah, Paul?
I'm sorry, what's the height now? 30. 30 feet. And what's the area? The area of the sign is 196 square feet. The code allows 100. Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay. Art?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions. I never had a chance to, or I never had a reason to look for OTB, but I did have a chance to have to look for Darkside Records, and I did find him from the top of Brickyard Hill.
You did?
I did. And the other thing was, because you do have to know where to turn in. When you're going east on 44, you need to see that because you have to know where to turn around to get to the other side of the road.
That's true, yeah, yeah, that's right. But when you were going towards the river?
Yes.
You really, unless you knew Darkside was there, you couldn't see the wall sign?
I knew the vicinity, but I couldn't see where I had to get off.
Right.
And I've had that same problem with the gym place for the kids there.
Makes sense, yeah.
So, yeah, that sign has been there.
No questions.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wish to address the proposal at 611 Duchess Turnpike? Okay. Any other questions from board members? Okay, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousalized? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll just call the zoning office in the morning.
And thank you for supplying that extra information.
My pleasure, it was with the extra effort. No problem.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, Fortuneoff is here. Hmm? Okay. Item three, Daniel Katz, Fortuneoff, at 1890 South Road.
I'm coming late. Lights.
Okay, if you'd each state your name?
My name is Punkachow. I represent Fortuneoff Furnish Concept LLC.
Okay, and you are...
I'm Rob Montakiza. I represent Dan Katz. I worked for Dan, he's the owner of the property.
Okay.
Gentlemen, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths I help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, have a seat, and if you'd kind of briefly tell us what you're proposing to do.
This is the existing sign.
Um, you're going to need, I think you can take that microphone off the stand.
Oh, this one?
Yes.
Yeah, see if, see, yeah, just, just pull it up.
Pull it up.
Okay.
Yeah, and let's see if it's on. Try it.
No problem. We have, oh, there is the one. We are proposing...
I think you need to turn it on. There should be a switch.
Hello?
Okay, thank you.
I work for Fortuneoff Backyard Stores, and we are moving into the property over there, owned by Dan Katz. We have requested to convert this pylon. Basically, we wanted to change the face plates over there, to make it as a one-plate Fortuneoff sign. We found out that there was no permit for the original sign, so we requested for a variance. During the process of the variance, we were told that the current signage in that area, if we convert this into a monument, it will be good for the neighborhoods and the businesses around that. So we are requesting to keep the size same, but change it into the monument over here. We are not going to remove any metal post. We are simply converting to the current structure into the monument, which can be added, the fixtures into the neighborhood.
Okay, now, I'm not sure what you mean by monument here.
The mon, okay, when you have a simple post and a boxes, it's simply a pylon sign.
Okay.
You will see, like, in news, in the old days, you used to see that one. Nowadays, if you, even on South Road, if you look at the Pet Coles and other places around that, what they do it is they decorate the post with the stucco, structure that, and put the boxes inside, so it looks much nicer.
Okay. Oh, all right.
We don't have that picture.
Okay, yeah, this, this is, yeah, what you're showing us is, is different...
Than, yes.
Yes, than was in the application.
And the application, that's where we were told to change the applica, uh, design.
Okay.
Right. This is what we wanted to do, from three boxes to one box, because Fortuneoff is the biggest client, tenant on the property.
Right.
We were told that may not be possible in this town. Can you come up with a monument design? I spoke to the owner, Fortuneoff Backyard Store, and SND, SDN Management, and they also say, like, go ahead for it, if, see if we can get the variance for it. We are not changing any sizes, keeping all the boxes, overall size same, in the new design.
Okay. All right, then, Christine, go ahead.
Well, the monument sign, that part looks very nice, and probably if it was just a little bit smaller, you wouldn't need a variance, right? Is that right, Jim?
I believe, I believe that's right.
We, we are going with the same size which is there right now, so we are not changing the size. We, in fact, we are not removing the post also from here. All we, all we are going to do is these three boxes, and replacing it with the one box of the same size.
Okay.
And covering, clearing the post, adding the picktop, so it looks nice, that's all. We are not even demolishing the post, not removing the foundation.
Okay, but let's, but let's turn to the, to the size of the sign.
Right.
Okay, you're, you're asking for a 76-square-foot sign, and you're, you're allowed 50 under, under the code, so, so you... So, so you, you want an extra 26 square feet?
Correct.
Okay. When I, when we were out there, we, we did some kinda quick calculations, and I believe that if you took nine inches off the top, nine inches off the bottom, you would meet the code, you wouldn't need a variance. And, in other words, yeah, what strikes me about the sign, um, it, I mean, it's, it's very legible, the Fortunoff, the backyard, I mean, it's, it, it, it's got a nice look.
Correct.
But there's so much blue that doesn't say anything.
This is what we have, and it really adds the taste. It really adds into it. We have this in Springfield, Cherry Hill, uh, Eaton Town Cherry, in fact, this is 20 feet long box, 100 square feet. It adds up, it shows because the words which are there, that are, really comes up very well onto the blue background.
I don't think, Jim, you're not saying because it's blue, you're saying it's just too big.
Too much?
Yeah, it's glaring, it just jumps out at ya.
That's what exactly we are trying to do.
We're saying it's too big.
And other thing is, if we cut the boxes down, here, there is no way to cut, we have to cut the post, and that is not possible, to cut the post right on the side. If I take nine inch off the top, I can do it from the bottom, but not from the top, because there is a metal post behind that, I-beams behind this.
How tall is this sign, that sign? Because we don't have that one.
This sign?
Hmm.
It's the same size, 15 feet, nine inch, six inches from the ground. 15 feet. Six inches from the ground.
I think he needs to, to take, the height, the top, how, how, from the ground to the very, very top of?
17 feet, five inches.
Okay, so... Are you done? I'm sorry. Christine, we used to?
I was just gonna say, so it's, it's no taller?
That's, than here.
It's no taller with, with the top, with that wood, it's like wood, on top than it is in our picture? The 17 feet?
Yes.
Well, 17 feet plus, six inches, I think he's?
17 feet, five inches.
Five inches, so it's five inches.
We had to keep it because there is electrical over here, so I couldn't, like, kind of, uh, otherwise, we had to demolish everything from this pick-top and redo the electric work, which adds pretty good amount into the, uh, complete con.
That's all.
Okay, so, and, so that's why you couldn't make it any shorter?
Right, I wanna keep the structuring, stop, uh, like, uh, taking the post down, removing the foundations, and putting the new foundations there.
Okay.
Because the post is old, so I cannot weld new part onto the existing one. If I cut it and weld, I cannot weld a new set structures on top of it. So, I have to utilize everything, start drilling the holes and nut bolts and everything, that's how I have to fasten it, which is pretty safe to do so.
Yeah, okay. Um, did you have anything else? Betty?
Is, who's in that spot, in that space, besides Fortunoff?
Uh, there is a wine and liquor, Dakota Wine and Liquor. He's still remaining there.
So, who is, is that Route 9 Beverage?
They're gone.
Gone.
They're gone. Fortunoff took three spaces, so we combined it into one.
The top threes, the, uh, Wine and Liquor is moving here.
Well, then, why are you keeping Route 9 Discount Beverages on this time?
Oh, no, that's where the new, new design, that's where I have the new design.
We don't have that.
We don't have that either.
Okay.
Because all this, we were given the information afterwards, we'll stay with it, it's going, it'll be modified in a minute.
Okay, yeah.
So, you changed it to Wine and Liquors?
Thank you.
Okay, and the?
Thank you.
The Wine and Liquor store is the shop on the right-hand side?
The south side by Burger King, that's in that corner.
Is your face, it's on the right?
That's where the models, the RV place used to be, the models and stuff?
Yeah, okay. Okay, Betty, anything else?
Is there space where anyone else may move in or may not move in that is gonna want some sign space?
To my knowledge, no.
Is it feasible in the future sometime? No?
No.
Fortunoff took everything, whatever is available.
It's a long-term lease and a long-term investment, so they're staying there for a while.
If you're familiar with Fortunoff, they came back with license with the, one of the partner from Fortunoff family, and in last six years, they opened up from three stores to 26 as of today. Every year, they are steadily growing with two to three locations. I'm from the sign company, I'm working here, as well as in Montgomeryville, Pennsylvania, and one store in Florida for them.
Okay.
All right, I have no more questions.
Art?
Yeah, I'm confused here. I'm going back to the, the existing sign is 50 square feet, right?
Existing sign is same, same as the 76 square feet.
Yeah.
Existing.
Oh, so the existing one's oversized to start with?
Right.
Yeah.
Like 50 is a lot.
Ooh. And you're saying you can't shorten that Fortunoff sign?
I have to remove the post, remove the foundations?
Not if you shorten it?
And do it again? Yes, I cannot shorten.
Make it narrower, you will. If you shorten it, if you shorten it, the posts is gonna stay where they are.
For, shorten it this way, this way.
Short, hey?
Yeah, I have to cut, I have to cut the post right over there, because if I short it, how can I cover the top part?
Easy, you move the sign up.
Move, right.
Take the bottom off and move the sign higher. You haven't made any modifications, really, to, to post. You're not, you're not listening, I don't think.
No, 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 I, I do want?
Take the bottom of the sign, slice it, make it smaller, move Wine and Liquors up. You don't have to do anything with the power box, because it's gonna be there, the width is the same.
I understand what you are, so move this one here, but in that case, with the structure, let me see, for hell no. Once I move it right now, to make it 76 square feet, I have to take, like, two square feet off, two feet off from the total sign.
Okay.
And it's going to look really small and odd in this design, monument design.
Well...
Okay.
Not really.
So, you moved Fortunoff, you moved the lettering up a little bit?
We can do that one, but there is a lot of open space, we did all the renderings that way, and it looks really odd on the pylon, monument over there.
Okay, but it's our duty to try to give you the smallest variance possible. I mean, you know, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate what you're saying.
Because I'm, that's what, I'm keeping the existing sign.
I understand that, but that was apparently a legal sign to start with, size-wise, that nobody ever challenged them on. Now, we have a chance to rectify that, to put you in conformity with what's supposed to be out there.
Okay.
So, it is doable, you're telling me? You could make that sign smaller?
Everything is possible, there is, nothing is impossible at what cost and how, what, like, will it appeal to this final design or not? Everything is possible. I don't believe that anything is impossible.
Yeah, the current owner's only had it about five, six years, and we were honestly never aware that it was illegal or not conforming.
Well, I understand that, but again, now is the time that we could possibly rectify.
Right, honestly.
And probably look not a whole lot different than that's going to look. Um, was not, you know, not a, not a amazing amount of work, and I would think it's not gonna add an expense to make it shorter, I wouldn't think. I don't see how cutting it off is gonna make it more expensive.
It's costly in this part. Yes, but we, uh, we were, like, kind of worried about, like, having a big hole underneath white, underneath the box.
Well, if you go up and down Route 9, you'll find a lot of those type of signs with a fair amount of space underneath, and that might not be a bad thing.
I agree with you, but at the same time, like, we found, like, a lot of places, and that's what?
I, I hear what you're saying, I think we're going around in circles here. I'm, I'm done for right now.
Okay. All right, Paul? Um, you said you had some other renderings? But, you had some other renderings?
Oh, no, this is the one between, uh?
He has other stores.
Ah, okay. No, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you said you had other renderings that you compared to, that?
Oh, that, under other rendering is for the different, uh, locations, we have done it, bigger sign, that's one.
You have anything that, that shows what, 50 feet, what 50 square feet would look like?
No, because 50 feet, uh, the Fortunoff sign, 50 feet, is going to be only 34 square feet. That's, that's where I was talking, sorry, yeah, let me come back to that point. Seven, uh, 76 square feet is not only for Fortunoff. Fortunoff is only 60 square feet.
Right.
So, if I keep the 50 square feet, then Fortunoff is getting only 34 square feet over there, because this sign is 16 square feet.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause it's eight, it's eight feet wide, right?
Eight feet wide, two feet high, so then, in that case, Fortunoff is coming just, like, over there.
Okay.
So, 76 square feet is not only for Fortunoff.
Um, do you know the, the bank just down the parking lot?
Yeah.
How does your sign compare with that sign?
Uh, the sign is a little bigger than that. Yes.
How little bigger?
The sign is bigger than that.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
The overall sign, not the Fortunoff only, overall sign is bigger than that, yes.
Okay, uh, Phyllis?
Is it, I guess I'd like to see what the sign would look like if it was meeting the specs. Is that possible?
Pardon?
Of course it's possible.
To, to, because I'm, I'm, I'm kinda with Art on the, like, just?
Shorten it up, the sign shortening up here is like, I would take?
He's looking for a variance for that much. This is how much he would be entitled to.
Right, but if you take a little bit there, and a little bit there, and everything goes up, and then it would?
A lot of blue will be gone from here, and that's where it will look like a, if you see in this one, like, very few lettering, we like to have less wording, more background on the sign, so that, it will, at least, it will take two, two feet off this one, complete sign.
Well?
More than two feet.
What?
Right now, it's, uh, 90 inches from top to bottom, we have to make it, sorry, not two, but 51 inches only.
Okay, but what, what, what if you took six inches off the top and the bottom of the blue sign?
That, that's, yes.
You'd still, you'd still need a variance.
We still need a variance.
But it would, but it would, it would be smaller, you could move it up a little bit.
Yes, instead of 76, we will be at 68, 68 square feet. If I take six inch from the bottom, six inch from the top?
Right.
Will still be 68 square feet.
Right, which, um, uh...
I would like to see how that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, um, I, I mean, I, I can see where, you know, taking, taking a, a, a foot off the top and a foot off the bottom would, would give you a very different look, but it seems to me, I mean, I mean, I mean, it seems to me six inches would?
I, I can take that decision, yes. Author, uh, honor has allowed me. Six inches is fine. If I take, like, keep a one finger, it's okay. Two fingers, it's really, as you said, it's not going to be. So, I can, I can, uh, go back to the drawing board and we, I can convince, uh, not convincing, but I can tell them that, let's make it only, instead of 90, uh, seven and a half feet, make it six and a half.
Okay.
It will be fine.
Okay. I mean, I think it's gonna be visible, I, I would just, I would, I just don't want to?
I understand.
Approve something that is, is currently in violation of the code?
No, I understand.
And to, eh, you know, I think this is opportunity to, to start making?
I can go back to drawing board, and I can cut off six inches from the top, six inch. Basically, when I make the box, I'll make it only, uh, six and a half feet, take this out, put, put it up there.
Okay, is that? I mean, that sounds?
That minimizes, right, that's where we're going here.
Yes.
Well, would it be possible to see renderings of?
Hundred percent, everything is possible.
Okay. Then if you want to come back with a rendering of what 50 square feet for the total would be, and then what you're willing to do?
Excuse me, sorry.
If you want to come back with a rendering of what would be applicable under the code, where you don't need a variance, and then what you, this new proposal that you have, so we can compare that.
Mm-hmm, 50 and a 68 square feet.
68 and a half is what you?
60, 68 square feet. Right now, it's 76, so 68.
Right.
76 right now, so 68 square feet.
Yeah, good.
I did the math of the 68 and a half, but, okay.
Sorry, I'm jumping with the numbers.
Okay. All right, um, is there a consensus in the board?
Yeah, I just have another question.
Yeah, sure.
Were you gonna put signage on the building?
Uh, front, yes, on the front of the building.
Okay, and those?
Complished.
That sign was gonna be within code?
Oh, yeah, we got the permit today.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. We got the permit today.
You know, I think you might like it with a little less blue. I really do. You know, it's, it's, it's an attractive sign, but it's, um, that's a lot of blue.
Is the sign underneath it gonna be that green?
I cannot see.
I gotta ask, you're laughing.
For what, for the Dakota sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's his colors.
That's his color, okay.
Well, I mean, we could, you know, we can?
Well, it's just 'cause this one is blue, so I didn't know if that was really, okay.
Yeah, right.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, so if, um, I understand it, you'll, you'll come back next month, and you'll have?
50 square feet and 68 square feet, right?
Okay, and then, we also have this one, so? Okay, so our next meeting is?
March 13.
Uh, March 14. 14?
No, I'm sorry, that's wrong. Sorry, you're right.
It is.
That's right, it is March.
What, what day, March?
It is 13.
Okay, March 13.
13.
Okay.
I, just, I want to add something. When Ms. Capone asked that question, I was late because I was researching that area, and I'm, I am proposing them another sign on the side of the building also.
On the side as well?
On the side, if it's possible, I'm not hundred percent sure.
That's a different, that's a different application.
Application, so, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll, I'll, most probably, I'll come back tomorrow, I'll see more in the area, drive through and check it out.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay, so we're agreed then?
Do it, Jerry.
We have the advertisement.
Well, you're, you're not at this time seeking the wall sign?
Second wall sign.
The second, on the side.
Did you just say you were going to look at it?
Yeah, I looked at it today and, um...
You're going back to tomorrow?
Tomorrow, and I'll submit the paperwork tomorrow.
Okay, but that, that would be then a...
Completely separate.
A separate, okay, okay.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, just so we understand.
Nothing to do with this one, nothing to do with this one.
Okay.
I, I, I hope I look into that and if I request, I can convince all of you.
Would you, would you be sure to add a photo of the building? Looking at it from the front and from...
I'll be...
Which side do you want to add the sign to?
Uh, facing north, facing north.
Would you do a picture of that side from Route nine?
Yeah, I'll be taking the picture by the Petco and I'll submit that way.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so, um, I move that we adjourn item number three, Fortunoff, eighteen ninety South Road, to our March thirteenth meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now we're up to, um, okay, item number four. Let's see, uh, Robert Velez and Julia Di Matteo, care of Michael Berta, architect.
You should be good.
Okay.
My apologies for being late. I held up.
It's, it's been that kind of a day.
I think I broke, um, no, police here, right? I think I broke most land speed records getting here.
Well, thank you. Okay, your name, sir?
My name is Michael Berta. I'm the architect for the applicant.
Mr. Berta, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, you want to just briefly describe the project that you're designing?
Sure, what we have here is a, a single-family residence. It's on a kind of a very unique piece of property. It's, where it's setback, it's basically a flag lot. And what we're looking to do is install a two-car detached garage. And given the orientation of the way the house is right now with the front facing Delveron Avenue, uh, the street that it's fronting on is actually Peekaboo, which is a, let's call it underdeveloped or undeveloped, uh, private road, however you want to, however you'd like to describe it.
Well, when we were there, I think the word would be mud.
Mud, yes. Yeah, so, um, being the orientation and the way the house, and the way the property is, is, um, it's the only logical spot for the garage is what's being considered the front yard. So, um, that's the reason for the variance. It's the most logical location for the garage, but because it's in the front, you're not allowed to have a detached structure in the front of the property, the front yard.
Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
Is it truly detached if they have the poles and the columns and the...
That's not touching anything. That's a decorative...
It's not touching the size of the, those buildings?
It, it's, it's going to be a little bit short because it's a prefab thing, um, it's going to be an independent structure. And to be honest with you, it, budgetary reasons that may wind up not even being there.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. There, there is a, a bigger area kind of behind the house. It was, but it's not practical to put it back there.
Well, there's actually, um, what's being constructed right now, there's actually an addition already going on behind the house. Um, if you're familiar, where, if you were on the property, you saw where the rear door is.
Yeah.
There's a, a deck being added and a, um, a sunroom.
Okay.
Already being constructed right now. That's under a separate permit.
Okay.
So in order to do that with the garage, it would have actually forced it to be closer to the side yard.
Okay.
So we would have then wound up needing a side yard variance. And it's also starting to get close to the septic tank coming out. And, uh, because the septic fields are behind the, let's, let's call it to the back left corner of it. So it would be, it, it might start interfering with that.
Okay. Okay.
And given, and the other, the other thing is, we're, we're putting it up right against the edge of the current driveway. So we're trying to minimize the amount of, of blacktop and impervious surfaces by installing this right on the edge of where the driveway stops.
Yeah, okay. Paul?
No, I don't have a question.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Carmen?
How, um... How is it decided that, that something is, an area is going to be a private road?
To be honest with you, I have absolutely no idea how that was decided. I'm, I'm assuming that was done when the subdivision was, when this piece of property was subdivided, um, back in the early two thousands. It's actually, there's, there's an actual easement that goes through the property, um, to some lots farther up. So they actually have half acre of land that they own that they can't use. That they're, they have to maintain.
Goes up to Marywood?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because there's a couple lots, there's, I believe, uh, one or two lots up there that are, that are used at easement as well. So they're always going to be, and they're always, there's, will always be cars coming down that road from some of their neighbors. So the garage is being put there for a couple reasons. One, it's the most logical spot because of where the existing driveway, but it's also to help screen their rear yard for their, for the neighbors that are going to be passing by.
Okay, and who maintains the road?
I think collectively, they all maintain it up to a certain point. You know, right now, since this house has been vacant, my client's bought it as a foreclosure. I believe the people in the back have been maintaining it all along. But I'm assuming, I haven't seen any, anything in the deeds, but I'm assuming that they're going to be responsible for the road up to their house and then everybody else will be responsible from there on. Either that or it's one person doing it and they all share the bill. Similar to other lots in the town that, over by, off of Wilbur, those, those houses, I know that they all share a partial burden of the, of the maintenance
Right.
on the road.
Yeah.
But as, as for the specifics, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay. Okay, is there anyone in the audience? Yes, Pam? Please, please, you, you need to come up here and, um...
I'm Linda Montanino. I live at Nine Redwood Lane. I am the property bordering.
Okay.
You need to be sworn in.
Ms. Montanino, as I said, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
Yes.
Please advise that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes, okay. I am the bordering property on Nine Redwood. Peekaboo Lane actually is at the end of my backyard. I'm right next door, Nine Redwood. I am here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, I know a little history from what I've been told and I believe, you're going to have to verify this, I believe the road is, from what I've heard, because people have looked into purchasing that property and the reason they hadn't is the road does belong to that property and they're supposed to maintain it. But the neighbors have said over the years, the people who owned it or foreclosed weren't keeping up to their duty and they weren't maintaining it, so they took on the duty. In fact, I've removed trees off it with people. My question is, where this two-car garage is, are you going into the, the woods? Are you cutting down trees?
No.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's beautiful.
No, 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 if, if, if I may answer?
Yes, sure.
Um, if you're familiar where the driveway is, the black, the existing blacktop?
Yes.
Okay, we're actually going to be where the edge of the blacktop is closest to your property?
Yes.
We're going to be in from that edge closest to their house about five feet.
Oh, okay, so you're not knocking down any of the trees?
We're going to be, um, probably twenty feet away from that stone wall that's in the woods.
Okay.
The remains of that.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're a good distance away. We're not touching any tree. There will be no trees coming down. If anything more, there will be something, they're going to be planting a couple of...
Beautiful, beautiful. I've been wanting to go over, I don't know if they live there.
Okay.
Well, that was my question. But that was my only question was about basically where it was located, was if it was using the existing piece there that's already there, then I, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, yes, sir? I'm sorry, we, we have a procedure that we have to follow.
Hi, I'm Robert Cuccarella.
Ms. J... Go ahead, go ahead.
I live at Nine Redwood Lane.
Mr. Cuccarella, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I help you God. Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Thank you. My question is, I, um, received a plot plan from zoning and my understanding is the edge of the garage will be ten feet from the property line. If you look at the sketch. Thirteen, okay, thirteen feet. If it's thirteen feet from the property line, a whole bunch of trees need to come down. Thirteen point seven, I believe.
Yeah.
It's, it's right at the edge of, you know, as I explained, where the existing blacktop ends.
Right.
It's going right at the end of that, so there are no trees there.
So it's going toward Peekaboo?
Yes.
And so it's going off toward Peekaboo?
Yes.
Do you have, may I look at that, uh, rendering?
Yep, I have one here. If you see, this is the existing edge of the blacktop right now, goes in and cuts it like that.
Yes.
It's going right there. So the trees that are right here are not getting touched.
Okay, but this area here...
There are no trees there, sir.
Okay, so the trees are really up here?
Yes, sir. We're not cutting any trees. I mean, there may be one or two little saplings, but nothing, nothing that's going to cause any, any adverse screening.
Okay, fine. That was my question. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, my, my, my recollection from our field trip out there is that the, where the garage is going to go is, is, is a completely open area.
Open area, okay, great, thank you.
That's one of the reasons we put it there, so we wouldn't affect any screening.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there anyone else that wishes to address eleven Peekaboo Lane? Okay, anything else from the board? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move, back in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, thank you. All right, item six, Great Eastern Color Lithograph Corporation, forty-six Violet Avenue.
It's me also.
Oh.
Oh, no wonder you were in such a hurry.
Um, probably sometime in the summer.
You're already sworn in.
I'm good, okay. Yes, this is why I was in such a rush.
Oh, wait. Legal counsel says you should be sworn in again because you're not sworn in for this application.
You want to swear at me again, that's fine.
Mr. Berta, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay.
Okay, this one. Over the course of years, the state, I'm assuming, has done a few takings, they've raised the road. So one of the things that we want to accomplish with this is we, we want to remove the existing brick veneer that's on there because it's in, it's in poor shape. So we want to pull that down, we want to strengthen the walls because with the trucks and the traffic being so close to the building now, the vibrations from the building are causing damage. So the reason for, what, what we're doing is, you can see by the rendering on the elevation, is that we'll be putting, we're going to be putting a series of uh, concrete block piers on the outside to give the wall a, a lot of added support. And we're also going to be raising the parapet up just slightly, just to give it a little bit of look, to give it a little bit more height, to hide a little bit what's going on behind it. We're coming out, I, I believe it was, um, eighteen, sixteen inches off the existing face. Still within, you know, plenty of room setback from, from the curb that's there. But we, we're, most of this work is due to, like I said, the, the state raising the road, the roadbed the way they did, the takings, and a lot of the work that's going on, it's unfortunately, they've created a non-conforming condition. And we looked at doing it a bunch of different ways, but there's already piers on the inside that we're, we're building on the outside to create a solid. And they've been trying to do all this repair work for the inside and at this point, we really can't anymore.
Okay, Christine, questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art, no questions. What is the building being used for?
Great Eastern, it's, um, if you remember years ago, they used to do all the printing of the magazines. Now they're getting away from that and, uh, currently, right now, FCO Bakery rents, uh, a lot of space. So if you had a donut recently, most likely the mixings came from that, this, this building. But, um, so it's them and they still have a lot of it that they're doing circuit boards now for, um, different, different type of applications. So they've kind of changed over out of the, the printing. They did, uh, they did some online, online magazine hosting, things like that, but now they're, they're getting more into the electronics.
Okay.
So most of the print, almost all the printing manufacturer is now gone and I think they have a little bit left that they do for their own selves now.
Okay. But the, the, except for the addition of these, um, columns, the...
The brick will be removed and we're going to be, uh, creating a new stucco facade.
Okay. Okay. Paul? Um, you don't have any right of way issues?
No. We've already checked.
Okay, that's all I have.
I have no questions.
Carmen? Okay, anyone in the audience wish to address the Great Eastern Color Lithograph application, forty-six Violet Avenue? Okay, seen no one. If there are no further questions from the board, is there a motion to close the public?
Don't move.
Don't move, back in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, um, okay, that takes us through the applications. Do we want any kind of a recess or should we just keep going?
I'm okay.
Keep going, okay. All right, um, okay. Item number one, um...
The lens are here, right?
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, yes, um, so that would be uh, Valley View Road. Okay, so this is item seven, okay. Okay, this is a variance, uh, to allow in addition to to an attached garage to be located fifteen feet from the side lot line, where twenty feet is required. Um, this is a, I have two actions, so we don't have to do any environmental determinations. The county has no comment. There is no staff report. So we can, um, attached to the application, there's, um, they've filled out, um, answers to the various questions that we need so that we could use this as a, as a findings if we're so inclined.
Well, they need a little help. I said they, they need some addition.
Oh, to, oh, to the, to the, to the comments?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right, so, well, we could, we'll, we can... Let's first kind of come to a consensus about what we're going to do and then, then I will try to provide a, um, some findings. Any questions, comments from the board?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, it's an oddly shaped lot and it could create some really adverse effects. Kind of a minimum impact.
Okay, yeah, um, I didn't, I didn't see any issue there either. Okay, if, if so, then, uh, okay, um, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of area variance. Uh, I think the board finds on the basis of the, um, drawings that have been submitted and our field trip, that the proposed structure will fit very nicely into, into that neighborhood. It'll be of the same size and, and design as many of the other houses. Two, whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. No, given, given the shape of the lot, um, and the location of the existing garage, this, it would, it would make no sense to try to put this garage, you know, on the other side or in the back or, or, or somewhere else, so there, there's, there's really not, not many, um, there, there's no other option for a garage. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, they're looking for, um, a fifteen-foot setback where twenty is required, then that's, that's, um, a variance of twenty-five percent. Uh, but I think given the size of the lot and the distances between the houses, this is, this is not substantial. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. No, the, the only issue here is a matter of just how many feet it is from the side lot line. It will really have no, um, impact on the neighborhood. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. It's self-created in the sense that, um, the, uh, they've decided to build a, a third garage. It, it's, um, but this doesn't preclude the granting of a variance. Okay, um, so with, um, those as the findings, Christine, do you want to make the motion on this one?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members and items one through five that you just mentioned. Uh, in approving this variance, the board adopts as findings these determinations.
Second. Okay. Okay, a motion to approve the variance, item seven's been made and seconded, there's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? Approved, seven-zero. Okay, now, we go to, and-
Thank you, Carmen.
Good luck with the weather.
Thanks very much.
No, I, I've, I've never seen a crew put up rafters faster than you were doing it on Wednesday.
Thank you.
It was pretty impressive. Okay, so, let's see, um, let's do, uh, item four. Okay, this is Robert Velez and Julia Di Matteo, care of Michael Berta, the architect, 11 Peekaboo Lane. A variance to allow the construction of an accessory structure, in this case, a detached garage, in front of the existing principal structure. It's a type-two action, the county has no comment, um, there is no staff report, um, but again, um, we can, we can, yes. Okay, uh, comments from the board? People okay with this? Okay, all right, um, okay, in terms of the findings, um, the, uh, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, um, the board, based on its site visit and the, and the drawings of the proposed, um, house and garage, finds that it will be consistent with the existing neighborhood. It's, um, the location of the garage is technically in the front yard, although the front of the house actually faces a different way, um, that, um, the really odd configuration of this lot really limits how this could be, how this could be built. And, it's, it's consistent with the other structures in the, in the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some method, other than a variance, um, it would be extremely difficult, given the, the really unusual configuration of the, of the lot.
And he testified that the location of the septic system was also in issue.
And there's a septic system, yes, and that, um, it, anywhere would require a variance of some kind. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial, um, I mean, it's substantial in the sense that it's in front, technically, it's in front of the, the house, meaning it's between Peekaboo Lane and the, and the main structure. But, given that Peekaboo Lane is a private road, and the orientation of the lot, um, this, this is, this is really not a, a major issue. So, in that sense, it's not substantial. Uh, four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical conditions, um, no. In, the applicant has testified that the existing trees and screening will remain as they are. Uh, five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, um, it's self-created in the sense that chose to build a garage, um, but given the existing conditions, um, it is the best location for the garage, and so, in that sense, um, it, he's kind of, he's, the applicant is forced to locate it where he proposes. Okay, so, with those as the findings, um, Betty, do you want to do the motion?
Sure, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered at the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopt, as findings, the determinations found in items one through five, as you have just-
Yeah, okay. Okay, and so, you're moving that, Paul is seconding it, so, um, there's a motion made and seconded to approve the variance in item number four. There is no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? Approved, seven-zero. Then, let's jump to item six. Eastern Color Lithograph Corporation, located at 46 Violet Avenue. This is a variance to allow an existing structure to add, I guess, decorative and, um-
Structural support.
Yeah, structural columns along the facade that would decrease the front yard setback to six-point-oh-eight feet and six-point-two-five feet, where fifty feet is required. Is a type-two action, and the county has had no comment, and I'm- Yep, okay, um, everybody okay with this?
Wall's been there forever.
That's gonna go a long way in helping that long wall that's been sitting there for so many years.
Yeah, and, and, and the, as we noticed when we were out there, the, the brickwork needs to be redone, it's, it's badly discolored in some places. Okay, um, okay, then for findings, um, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, um, the board finds that the, the proposed, um, new columns and the new, um, facade facing will actually improve the look and appearance of the neighborhood. The, the board also notes that that building has been there for a long, long time. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved in some other method, no, um, the, the columns have to be there to brace the wall. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial, um, given the fact that it is non-compliant now, the, um, the small decrease in the front yard setback is, is actually comparatively minor. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions, um, no, it's, it's basically simply changing the, the wall, it's gonna have no other effect. And finally, five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, um, self-created in the sense that they are making a slight change in the, in the, um, structure of the wall, um, but, um, it's not self-created in the sense that it really was the, the DOT that is responsible for the, the very small, um, front setback along that road. Okay, with those as the findings, um, let's see, Art, you want to do this?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area, area variance, set forth in item six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board, board members, there is no staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts, as findings, the determinations found in items one through five of what you just did.
Okay.
No staff report.
Second.
Okay, um, motion to approve the variance in item six has been made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's?
Okay.
Approved, seven-zero. Okay. Okay. All right, then, we're back to the top, item number one, um, and Herbert Reddell, 611 Duchess Turnpike, this is the Darkside Records. And, um, this involves, um, I believe, four variances, but, um, let me, let me go through them one at a time, and, and our attorney could correct me. So, the variances would, would allow, A, a freestanding sign of thirty feet in height, where twenty feet is allowed. B, a freestanding sign setback- setback-
Zero feet.
Okay, zero, zero feet, um, from the highway right-of-way, where a minimum of ten feet is allowed. C, a freestanding sign of a hundred and ninety-six square feet, where a hundred square feet is allowed. And D, a freestanding sign without a landscape monument base. Okay, I think, is that, I think that's what we're dealing with here. Okay, um, all right, this is, um, an unlisted action, so, I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of determining the environmental impact of the proposed action at 611 Duchess Turnpike.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusal's? Okay, um, I further move that the DBA finds, based on the short-form environmental assessment form that has been, uh, it, uh, filled out by the applicant, that the action proposed for 611 Duchess Turnpike, uh, will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, so, on the variances, um, what is, what is the board's wisdom on this?
Sign's been there, forever, doesn't make it right or wrong, but-
Right.
There's a lot of money to modify it. He is correct, you can't-
That's a very strange portion of the highway. You need to be able to identify where you're going, whether you're going east or west to find it. It's really, that whole little strip right through there is quite difficult.
Yep.
And that was a good point made about when you're coming down Brickyard Hill, how you really, really can't see the sign.
Right.
There's way too much signage there.
Well, for, you know, I, I went by there the other day just to look, and there are several very large-
Yes.
-along there. I mean, the one for the Duchess Mall is huge, um, the Joe Kew's-
But nice, he did a nice job.
No, 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 the, the, not the, not-
Oh, the word came out, was?
Right.
Oh, that's not nice.
That's not-
No, but it's just a, it's a big slab of a sign.
It's a very busy area.
And, and it, and-
There are a lot of businesses in that little area, in that little strip right, and a lot of them are in, behind each other, so it's really hard to know where you're going, unless you know exactly where you're going.
So, in that regard, does he need a hundred and ninety-six square feet? Does he need these three signs? Assuming that you're gonna authorize the height and the setback.
But if he doesn't upgrade them, it's, what's he gonna leave, what's there, the rusty old, you know, I mean, it's-
He doesn't, doesn't, why do you need-
What do we make him spend?
It was solely to identify where the building is, that people know where they're going. They know that vinyl, CDs, movies, turntables, and gifts at darksiderecordsandgallery.com under Facebook and Twitter are available.
Do we even put blank panels there?
I, he can do whatever he likes, but I don't know that he needs a hundred and ninety-six square feet of signage.
Well, actually, the first time I saw, when they first came in, Darkside Records, when they were on Main Street, I thought it was a studio. I, I didn't really, I didn't really know that they sold stuff.
Yeah.
So, the, the answer is, I don't know.
Okay, then.
Well-
Maybe I was the only-
Yeah, I mean, we, we, um, we, we raised that when it first came in, you know? You know, what, what happens if you, you know, take the top off, or?
He doesn't have to take them off, he just doesn't have to use them, utilize them as signs. I don't know that we need that. He has a point that you, once you come down on, on the arterial, you can't see it after you pass Brickyard Hill or Burnett Boulevard, um, that's fine, but, and if you're coming eastbound, you know that you have to make the turn, but if you're looking for Darkside Records, you know what they do. I don't know that there's a necessity for this amount of signage. The height, if it didn't cost six thousand dollars to reduce this, the sign, and he had clear sight view the whole, the way, I don't think he would be entitled to that, but those things allow him to that, I think. But, I'm not so clear about the necessity for twice the available signage.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, if, if we're starting from scratch, I would, I would agree. I think part of what's going on here is that they've got that existing, and-
Right, but don't you-
They want to use it. And, and to leave it-
Just because they, they want to use, some of it is, it takes a lot to correct.
Yeah.
The height, the setback, that takes a lot to correct.
Yeah.
That's gonna be very expensive. Not utilizing all the signage doesn't take a lot to correct.
So, what, leave it blank?
Yeah, something nice, maybe some paisley, something, you know, common.
Yeah, that's not too confusing.
Have some little cloud. No, I just don't, if he, there's no need for it, he doesn't have other-
Turntable.
Customers, other tenants there that need it. If in the future, he needs it, then I suppose it could be revisited, but I don't think it's necessary now. And I don't think we need to grant more than is necessary.
But isn't it still considered a sign, since the panel's still there?
If it's not doing anything.
Hmm.
Isn't it covered up right now?
I don't- I don't know, is that-
Connected, it would be one big sign, right?
Yeah.
But they're not connected. He only needs the top one, right?
When he presented, did he present alternative sign sizes or anything?
No, no, no.
He just came in with this.
Right.
I don't feel the need to change it. I'm okay with it, the way it is. I don't know how.
Because I think this is really what he wants to do.
I would have problems if it was another area.
Yeah, I mean, that-
Right.
That's, is now.
Right, and I don't think, I don't think that's what it needs to be.
So, what do you, you want them to have the two bottom ones blank?
If his argument is that he only needs, it needs to be seen, it can't be seen, except from Brickyard Hill, then he needs the height. His argument, eastbound, is that you need to know, you need to be able to see it in order to make the turn and come around. His argument is not that he needs a hundred and ninety-six square feet of signage. The fact that it's there is, I pose advantageous to him, but I don't think it's necessary. And I think we're constrained to only authorize what's necessary.
What's the building say, just Darkside Records? I don't remember.
Darkside Records.
That's all it says in the building.
Yeah, there's, there's a wall sign, and which, which I, is, is conforming.
I just wasn't sure what it said.
Nothing on the building says vinyl, CDs, and all that.
I mean, well, what if, to me, having a blank would look weird. I mean, it would suggest, for example, that there were two vacant stores back there.
Okay.
Paul, what if, what if we let him put the bottom sign, where the black one is, and leave the bottom one empty?
You want to grant him, grant him, um, like a hundred and fifty square feet?
How, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait. How can we do that? Can, can we grant less, and then he has to take a piece off? I mean, it has to come down, you can't just leave it blank, right?
Yeah, why can't he?
I would think he can leave it blank.
It's not a sign if it doesn't have words on it. If it were a blank, white piece of plastic, if one of those three were blank.
That makes me think that Fortune Off could have just, you know, it's- That makes me think that Fortunoff could've just, you know, it's not a sign, it's blank blue, right? All the way around.
No, no, no. Because that's one piece.
No, no, no. It's part of the sign.
That's attached. And you measure it, I believe you measure each of these faces individually and then add them up.
Right.
Whereas Fortunoff is one case.
One big sign.
And that's the distinction. There's blank, there's space in between these. The board's obligation is to weigh the benefit to the applicant against the detriment to the neighborhood and the prop, surrounding property owners. And whether granting the minimal extent, the variance extent necessary, is one of the things that goes into that determination.
Yeah.
I'm voting for this.
Yeah.
Okay, but I want you to make sure you're happy with that.
What is that? Well, that's what it is now.
Yeah, that's what...
Yeah. That's what's there now. There's no... If you're gonna do it with the addition that it has to all be for the same tenant, I don't see why that's necessary either. If you're not gonna do that, then it's likely to be advertising for something else.
But there's only one tenant in the building.
There is only one tenant in the building.
Well, wait a minute. So, it, it's, it's okay if all three parts are used by Darkside Records?
No, I think that's too much. I think all they need, Darkside Records needs, is the top one, based upon the line of sight and the way, location of the building.
And the other ones are blank panels. That's what Paul wants.
Right.
Not saying from rent, not saying...
Right.
You know, George Washington slept here, nothing like that.
[laughing]
Probably, probably did. But, uh, just blank panels.
Yeah. I, to me, to me, that would, that would just look odd. It would, and, to me, it would suggest that, you know, there, there are empty spaces, or more, more, you know, stores coming in, or some, something like that. I mean, let me, let me, let me go back to...
Well, if you, excuse me, I'm thinking out loud. If you use the balance of the, the benefit to the applicant, like counsel suggested, then certainly they get a benefit far more than, there isn't gonna be any detriment to the community because it's been there for thirty years already with no problem. So, we, I feel like...
Now, you would have to admit, the whole area is eyesore, right?
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's...
So, to say there's no detriment kinda ignores the fact that it's all an eyesore. We're stuck with this because it's been there for a long time, and it's gonna be cost prohibitive to remove it. So, we're kinda coming up with a way to justify doing this. I just think that the signage itself is way too much.
See, I think it would look terrible, this blank.
I think it's unique in that, um, they do have a, a lot of out-of-town customers and...
Yeah, it's a real destiny store.
And they don't know that they're going there to buy CDs or records or turntables?
Um, I think a lot of people don't know that they have, um, that variety. I mean, I think, I think it's known as a place where you go to buy vinyl...
Records.
Um, in fact, they handle a lot of related material. Um, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have known, um, that they had the other equipment, but...
Well, now you'll know.
Yeah, yeah.
Every day.
So, I just have one question. I think this is what maybe you were talking about before. If, if they move, if Darkside moves, does that mean the owner of the building can go back and use all three signs again for...
Yeah.
Not according to our new law, right?
I thought it...
Because the new code says that when a business expires...
The new code says if you change the business, then you have to come in for a variance. But under this board's precedent, if you were to say now that you can use all three signs with the new, it would be difficult to say to a new shop owner, not Darkside Records coming in, well, you can't use it because it's a detriment to the neighborhood, when you're deciding that Darkside is not a detriment to the neighborhood. You'd have to make a finding that because it's, would be advertising three businesses, it would be a detriment where advertise, three signs advertising one business is not, and that might be splitting hairs.
Yeah.
But it could convert back to just advertisement.
That's what I'm wondering.
That's what you're going towards, yeah. Right?
No...
You mean, use, like, for example, the Farretts signs and the...
He's, he's using it to advertise business. And he, and that's how it was used prior to Darkside moving in. So, if Darkside moves out, he could go back to that. Yes?
There would be no problem with him using the signs, the, the, he, there would be a variance for the use of the signs. But advertising the space for rent, I'm not sure if that actually qualifies as a business sign.
Okay.
I, I honestly don't know. I'd have to look.
Yeah. Could, 'cause there are special provisions for...
Right. They have to be limited in time and, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, okay. Well, in any case, that's, that, that is a hypothetical, and the application before us is, is quite specific about...
So, do you wanna separate it, or you wanna keep it all together?
The...
Or do you wanna see what everybody has?
I mean, the different, okay.
It seems like there might be a difference of opinion on the square footage, so maybe do that separately and do the other three together, or if it seems like the board will have different votes on the different location of the sign and the landscaped base issue.
I only have a problem with the area.
Do you wanna take a straw vote?
Okay. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm okay approving the application as, as it stands.
I am as well.
Um, you know, I, and, and I think, my rationale for this is, is the, is the benefit versus the harm. Um, it's clearly benefiting a, a new and successful business, and given the area, and given the fact that there's always been a big sign there, I, I just, I just don't see the, the, the harm that it's creating, but...
If there were no sign there, would you authorize a hundred and ninety-six square feet?
No.
Okay.
No, but, um, that's a luxury we don't have.
Well, we can fix that.
Well, if you, if you wanna put up the money to take the, the existing one down, they've said they would be happy to start from scratch, but...
Is six grand really that much money in, in the world of business, when you've got properties all over and you're, I, I'm not, I'm not being fresh. I really don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, he's doing business, he's renting out the space. Yes, he's paying and contrib, you know, paying taxes and all of that. However, is that an exorbitant amount of money?
Um, I, I mean, sounds like a lot to me, but that's, but, you know, you know, you're asking a good question compared to what?
Okay.
Um, but, and, and I guess my answer to that would be, um, even less than that seems to me, um, that, the, the hardship of, wait, let me start that whole sentence over again. Um, that, the, the benefit to the applicant, saving six thousand dollars to take out one of the panels, or fifteen or eighteen thousand to take the whole thing down, um, that benefit, um, even if it were less, outweighs, um, to me, the, the negative impact in this case, because of where it is, because of the fact that it's been there. Um, so...
Well, there are two applicants. You know, there's one applicant that would be paying for it. I mean, there's the other guy that gets the benefit of it.
Right, and I'm not sure who's paying what here. I mean, is, is it, is it the tenant that puts it up?
I don't think he's asking to do that.
Um, but, you know, is this one of, I don't know what their lease is, what, what costs get passed through. Um, I mean, obviously, the Reddles own it, so they have to be here to ask for the variance, but, um, you know, this, this, this may be something that just gets kicked straight to the, to the tenant.
Right.
Um, in which case, I think that it would be a lot of money.
Right.
Um, okay.
Anyone else?
Um, okay. How, how should we proceed here?
Anyone else gonna jump in?
You wanna do each one individually? Because obviously, they're gonna vote differently on that. Won't be unanimous. They might as well do them each individually, or do the other three, or the other two.
Okay. Um, all right, so let...
Unless you have four people that are gonna vote against the area variance, you can do it all together, and you just do it at one. You still pass.
Okay. I mean, Art, what's your sense?
I'm telling to agree with Paul.
Okay.
I think the question is whether you want your vote to be only against the hundred and ninety-six square feet aspect of the variance, or you want to vote against the other three.
I'm okay with the height. I'm okay with the setback. It's just the signage.
So, then I would say, at minimum, do two, so that it's not...
Okay.
You're gonna do all three, right? The landscape base one?
Yeah, um...
That's not even on my application. I don't know where you got that from.
Um...
It's in Sarah's denial letter.
Oh, it wasn't on this, though.
Yeah. Um, yeah, it's in, it was from the denial letter. Okay. Okay, so let me do a set of findings for three of the four, okay? And so, this would be, um, a variance to allow a freestanding sign, uh, thirty feet in height, where twenty feet is allowed; to allow a freestanding sign set back zero feet from the highway right-of-way, where a minimum ten feet is allowed; and three, a freestanding sign without a landscape monument base. Okay.
Can we do that if, if that part wasn't...
I'm just, I was wondering the same thing, because we didn't, it's not part of our public notification. Um, Sarah typically, when she, she hasn't been consistently addressing the landscaped monument base aspect of some of these signs, because I think the same issue would occur with the Fortunoff sign, wouldn't it?
Hmm.
Or is that a...
No, they're, they're saying that they're gonna put in the, the monument...
Well, that wasn't his picture. That wasn't his illustration.
He's not putting in anything.
But he described the sheathing of the poles as a monument sign, and a little bit of additional, um, around the footing, but there wasn't, I didn't see any plantings on it.
Is there a definition of monument sign?
I'm sorry?
Is there a definition of monument sign? Because I don't know why this is...
To me, it's not a monument sign.
I thought, yes, there is a definition, and I thought it had to have a solid base as opposed to the two poles.
Right, but what, what differentiates a monument sign from, you know, how did Fortunoff turn from two I-beams into a monument sign, and how does this turn into...
I don't believe that technically Fortunoff's is a monument sign.
I don't, I don't think so either, and I don't, I'm not sure that this one is, unless the definition somehow...
Well, it's freestanding pole sign.
Is it confused with pylon sign?
No, it's, I thought the issue for this is that the sign is supposed to be, to have a landscape base.
Right.
Oh, so all signs have to have landscape bases?
Okay, so you're suggesting we just eliminate that, that last portion that talks about the base of the sign?
Sarah's, Sarah's denial letter says pursuant to one-twenty-eight B, "The base of any freestanding sign shall be mounted within a landscape monument of stone, brick, or other material as approved by the planning board." So, I believe that this freestanding sign was meant to be a monument sign, and that's one of the issues.
Okay.
Okay, so, do we leave it or strike it?
It's not in my paperwork, so how can we, how can we even...
Okay, we strike it.
Yeah, Vodan's not even on there, right?
No.
Okay.
I mean, if that's a problem, then that sounds to me like they'll be cited for that at some, you know, point.
Or we don't vote on it and make, have Sarah...
Probably not.
We do it, re-advertise it, have them re-advertise it.
Vodan's not...
Okay.
Then they won't be cited.
All right, let's move on here. I'm getting tired of this.
[laughing]
Sorry.
Be brutally honest. Um, okay, so we're, we're dealing with the height and with the setback from the right-of-way. Okay. Um, okay, so, under findings, um, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, um, or a detriment to nearby properties created by the granting. Um, the sign has been existing for decades, um, and before zoning was enacted within the town, the area's commercial in nature, and there are a multitude of large signs in the area due to the shopping center and other businesses. Therefore, there will be no change in the character of the neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue. Uh, the site has had a non-conforming sign for many decades. Uh, the sign is made of large I-beams, is well-constructed, sections of the sign are welded. Um, to remove the sign, the applicant would be required to expend many thousands of dollars. Uh, in other words, it would cost more money to remove the sign than it would be to erect a new sign from scratch. Um, therefore, it's not feasible to demolish and remove the existing sign. Um, okay. Uh, three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Um, yes, it's substantial in the, the, both in its height and in its lack of setbacks. Um, D, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. Um, the, the sign has been in that, uh, location for many, many years, um, and, uh, there will be no, certainly no additional adverse effect by simply leaving it. E, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, um, self-created in the sense that they wanna, um, put different facings on the sign, um, but again, with, board notes that the sign has been there for, um, decades. Okay. And finally, uh, the, the board finds that, uh, overall, the benefit to the applicant and to the, um, store owner outweighs the, any detriment that the sign might have.
Second.
Okay, so, with, those are the findings. Um, let's see, um, where are we in terms of, is it me?
Yep.
Yes.
It's me, I guess. Okay. Um, did, did I do the, um, environmentals on this already?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I move that the board approve the, um, of items A and B of item number one. Uh, this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in a public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving, uh, this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations just listed, uh, under, uh, in items A through E, um, of the application. So, move.
Second.
Okay, so, we're voting now on, uh, allowing thirty feet in height as opposed to twenty, and, um, allowing the sign to essentially be right... the sign to essentially be right on the property line where a minimum setback of 10 feet is required. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousalts? Okay, so portions A and B are approved. Okay, then that takes us to part C. It's a variance to allow a freestanding sign of 196 square feet, where 100 square feet is allowed. Okay, then in terms of findings, okay, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood-
Seems like you could use the same thing, you're just-
Well, I have to address the size of the sign. And the sign under review has been existing for decades, and before zoning was enacted in the town, the area is commercial in nature, and there are a multitude of large signs in the area due to the shopping centers. The board finds that leaving the existing sign in the same size will make no change in the character of the neighborhood, and we note that there are several large signs, and probably non-conforming signs, already in that neighborhood. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method other than an area variance, given the location of the property and the topography of Route 44 or Duchess Turnpike in that area, the board finds that a large sign is warranted as a way for motorists, especially those from out of town, to find the location of the building and the, in time to be able to make safe turns in and out of the property. Okay, C, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Yes, the size of the sign at 196 square feet is almost twice the size allowed in the code. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, as previously noted, the sign has been existing for many years, and so will have no new or additional impacts. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, again, is self-created in the sense that they want to use it for a new store, but not self-created in the sense that they erected it, it's been there for decades. Okay, with those is the-
Jim, could you have the conversation down there stopped?
Carmen, yeah. It's a little distracting.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so with those as the findings, then let me go. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number one, part C, specifically a variance to allow a freestanding sign of 196 square feet where 100 square feet is allowed. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report, or, no, no staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items A through E of the application as just read out. So move.
Do you want to add a condition that the signs have to be solely for the tenant?
Okay, approval of this variance subject to the following conditions, that all three panels of the existing sign must be used by the existing tenant. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, so, motion's been made and seconded to approve the size of the sign at 611 Duchess Turnpike. All right, any further discussion? Okay, okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so there were-
Do a roll call.
Two, I believe there were two nays.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's approved, five to two.
Five to two.
Item number two, Tinkelman Architecture at Van Wagner Road, let's see, I think there are two variants, no, there's just one variance. One has been withdrawn. Okay, a variance to allow the location of an accessory use or structure to be on a different lot from the principal use. Okay, and so, of course, this is the parking lot that's across the street. The planning board has issued a negative declaration on this, the county has had no We, in fact, voted to approve this at the last meeting. Now, do we have, should we go back and redo everything, or can we simply reaffirm the previous decision?
Affirm the prior vote, the difference is that there are two members here who didn't vote the first, it's not the same voting members, so I would suggest that the board just take a new vote on the variance.
Okay.
I think I can add for the record that I've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last hearing.
You don't need to make new findings or go through the same, I mean, that can be as consistent, that can be from the prior vote, it's just that we actually need a new vote.
Oh.
We don't need to redo the findings and-
Okay.
Just have a motion to-
Okay.
-move for the same reasons as we approved the last time.
All right, so let's see. I move that the board approve the request for variance set forth in item number two, and let's see, this decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations made in the prior-
Meeting.
Meeting, okay. So move.
Second.
Okay, I'm assuming there's no further, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousalts? Okay, approved, seven, zero.
Seven, zero.
Okay, item three has been adjourned, and item five, the estate of Gilda, how do you pronounce that? Sal, Sal, Sichia?
Sichia.
Something like that, okay, at Two Gertrud Place. So a variance to allow an existing enclosed porch to be located 18 feet from the rear yard line where 30 feet is required, so type two action, the county has had no comment. We have no, we have no findings, so I'll just have to make something up here. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, the enclosed porch has been there for perhaps 50 years, and my guess, it was built before there was, certainly the current zoning, but probably any zoning. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method other than a variance, no, it's an existing porch, there's no other remedy. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial, the setback is 18 feet where 30 is required. In terms of the neighborhood, and because of the existing screening, this is not a substantial request. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment, no, it will not, it matches the house, it's, will have no new impact. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, no, it's really not, it's, the porch has been there. Okay, all right.
Sure. I make a motion that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by the board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the recommendations or determinations just mentioned, so move.
Second.
Okay, there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousalts? Approved, seven, zero, okay. The last item, a request from the planning board that they be the lead agency on Camelot Village Motor Home Park Site at 589 and 621 Chief Road. I really don't know very much about what that is.
Adding on?
Adding a couple lots.
Are they? Okay, all right, okay. I move that the ZBA approve the request of the planning board to serve as lead agency for the Camelot Village Motor Home Park Site.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recousalts? Okay, the planning board can go do that. Bring us to the end of the agenda, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.